You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the November 16th, 2022 meeting of the LaPorte County Commission. You can get more information for this meeting by going to www accesseslaporte county dot org.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for the call. It's good to have you here. Welcome to the board today. I'm David O'Leary. I'm glad to be here. 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 I'm glad to be here.
Currents contract for 2023, consideration of a possible hold harmless in relation to work being done by Woodruff and Sons for the county, and also consideration of changing the assignments for county credit cards. I guess all under new business, please.
I would second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next would be approval of the November 2nd, 2022 minutes.
Move to approve the minutes.
I'll second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consideration of claims.
Commissioners, have tables...
Microphone.
Oh, oh my. Unfortunately, both tables are muted. We have payroll, whoa, payroll for the period ending 11/4/22 and the amount of $1,292,799.11, and then we have operating expense claims. It was reported in your agenda of $3,184,903.19. I would like to manually ask the commissioners to add an amount of $7,050 for a 1622 bill for Freeman Associates and also a $16,174.25 bill from 9/21/22 for Drayton, V.G., Surigo, and Elliott. I would move to approve that.
I second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda will be public comment. Anybody have any public comment on the LaPorte County government?
Good evening, gentlemen. Tim Short, lifelong resident, LaPorte County Wells Township. Talked to you real quick, not as a member of Sheriff's Department or Courthouse Security, but as a member of Michigan Marines Marine Corps League Detachment 1348 and Department of Indiana Marine Corps League Toys for Tots Coordinator. Just real quick, I'm sure you've seen in the highly building courthouses, the, all of us at Toys for Tots, we're getting our collection boxes added or put out. We've got about 160 locations throughout LaPorte County for toy collection boxes. We started about two weeks ago or so, and they'll all be in place until about December 12th. Then we'll do our final pickup, and then we'll start from there, passing out toys to all the kids in LaPorte County that need them. Just real quick, last year, I don't remember if I talked to you about it or not, last year for our 2021 campaign, we collected 13,696 toys, and we passed them out to 3,900 kids just in LaPorte County.
Wow.
Nationally, and I just got these numbers a short time ago, nationally Toys for Tots collected 5,212,000 toys, and we passed those 5 million toys out to 1,796,000 children just in the United States. So that's over a million kids that had a Christmas last year. Compliments of everyone in the nation that donates toys to Toys for Tots. Not only all of us Marines that do it. One other thing that I'm kind of proud of, all of us in Indiana Department of Marine Corps League, we, I'm sure everyone has seen the news, starting in February, the Russians invaded Ukraine, and a lot of those kids were displaced, a lot of them and their families headed towards Estonia, country of Estonia, sleeping in churches, homeless shelters, you name it, families are staying there. So we kind of, all of us in Indiana, came up with a plan, we put it in place, we collected some toys for Ukrainian kids. We got one of the, actually, they volunteered, a RV manufacturer in Elkhart volunteered storage space for us, and they volunteered a shipping container, and they also volunteered to pay for the shipping. So all of the detachments in Indiana either got toys, collected toys, or we all donated cash. Two of the Marines from Elkhart area Marine Corps League detachment volunteered, compliments of the Marine Corps and the State Department, they traveled to Estonia along with the toys, and they bounced from town to town, little village to little village in Estonia for about two weeks, passing out all these toys to the Ukrainian kids that have been displaced. In total, they passed out 6,000 toys to all these kids. I follow Brad on his Facebook page, and every day he'd have a different story with the family he talked to, mom and the little one there, and their husband, and 16-year-old, 17-year-old kid left behind fighting the Russians, just every day. That's, that's the stories that, or never heard from their family again, she made it out, and the rest of the family, parents left behind, whatever. So all of us in Indiana, that's kind of what we accomplished in about six weeks this summer. Like I said, December 12th will be our last pickup day for all of our boxes that are out here, and that's all I have to say.
Tim, thanks for what you do. I know guys over the years, I know Ronnie Stibb and Tim Vaughn, these guys, you guys worked like crazy on that, and I've helped him in the past. When, when, when we took the stuff to Rolling Prairie from VFW and from, we had so much stuff that he couldn't even fit it all in his car, so I had to load up my wife's car, and you guys used to do a heck of a job. And thanks for what you do.
We've got a warehouse up by Michigan City that they give us space to store in for the whole year, and then that's where we start passing out from there, so.
It's good to see good people doing good things in the county.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Randy Beach, 4177 West Schultz Road. I have a few weeks to catch up on things that were stated in here and not answered on my behalf. After more than eight years of watching, hearing noises of an industrial operation behind my house, you'd think the county would have more, have done more to protect the 784 property owners within one mile. You would assume they would have tried to protect the over 20 property owners that have residential properties connected with the industrial operation behind my home. You'd believe they would have looked at the petition with over 100 signatures. Well, you would have been wrong. We have heard the department's head, department head stand up here and criticize property owners that they are trying to defend their property rights, almost to the point where it would be called, I better leave that alone for now. One even stated that he is the wrecking ball of truth. He talked of hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on one individual. I think he is referring to me. Me, a property owner, a property owner protecting the land that I own. That's the job of the county, not mine. He stated that there were no code violations. Next, we see the current MS4 paperwork in court showing code violations. We have a county attorney that keeps wanting to pin same letters over and over in emails untold of short-lived victory dances of success. We want the thing closed down permanently. One of my favorite lines he always brings up about a lawyer that we didn't get, that we would have had to pay for, but he never mentions the one that he sent us to that stiffed us. I'd like to request the current sitting commissioners, have all department heads get all paperwork together that they have on the excavation sites, not just the one at my house, the one, there's three of them, one's even called a farmer in a field now, that's a big farm, and have it turned in. So the incoming elected and appointed do not have to start from scratch again. This is the third election cycle coming into office. Let's try to save the citizens some money. God knows how much has been wasted. Remember, it was set in here by one of your employees, hundreds of thousands of dollars. The operations took on a whole new life earlier this week. A truck that exited the sand excavation site was followed to Michigan City Works site, the site that at last meeting, Mr. Mrazinski gave the company a shout out to doing a fine job out there. The excavation site is still hauling, which we all know. They are still selling, again, we all know. We now know they are delivering to a LaPorte County job site, which I didn't know. The trucks were followed to the LaPorte County Sanitary Sewer Forest Main Water Main Extension Project for the Loves Truck Stop out on 950 West 300 North. Now, I bet Loves is not going to like having their name brought up in this political game. And this is all this is, a political game. It is a business, and it's not, it's not that it's not a business because somebody in charge said, no, it's not. That's just a bunch of BS. The political game needs to stop. This is a business, stop it. Now, one thing I do understand about government projects is there's always an overseer from the government watching everything. That being said, somebody from the job site knew the material was coming from the closed excavation site, or somebody on the job site was not doing the job. Can we have that investigated? Eight years is a long time. Eight years of storytelling, eight years of citizens paying the tax dollars for road repair while individuals profit. The traffic needs to be stopped by the sheriff, period. The sheriff doesn't need to worry about what the court case is or anything, his job is to stop illegal traffic, traffic that does not have a permit, driving on county roads for the pleasure of who? Why is this allowed? Why is this allowed? The sheriff needs to stop this. It doesn't matter why it's in court. It's not the sheriff's responsibility if it's in court. This is a business without a cause or reason to be using county roads with industrial vehicles. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reach.
Anybody else with public comment? Anybody on Zoom? See none, Seth? Seeing none, public comments over, we'll move on to department head reports while the lights are still on. They've been blinking for about 20 minutes. Or maybe it's me.
Good evening, Commissioners. Larry Lovendowski, Director of Facilities. Wanted to talk to you a little bit about the Rolling Prairie project, give you a little update. Lights are on finally out there. Gas is in on the project right now, so we're moving forward on that. What we are looking, having a little problem with there, some of the electrical parts and pieces that we're not going to see until February. As of this morning, you know, talking with the contractors, the generator and some of those things that we are looking at, they won't be here till February at the earliest. So one of the other things we talked about in our construction meeting is, you know, looking forward into February, we need to do the move of the origin, the existing highway garage over there and do the cleanup. So we started getting prices on having the excavator do some cleanup over there. We're going to have to do an environmental, some environmental research out there, and we're also going to have to do an asbestos survey on, on the property over there because of the building and everything. So one of the things we are looking at, we're getting the prices in, and we're looking at our contingency that we have left so we can possibly get that cleanup done within that job that we've already had set in place. So I just wanted to give you an update of where we're at and which way we're going with things. Okay? Any questions?
No, but that was the good news at the meeting this morning was about that we may have money left over to do the cleanup. That'll be good. It has to get done before we put it up for sale.
There are things that won't be able to be done till spring, some landscaping and stuff like that, it's just we, the grass is growing now, but like I said, the landscaper, it's, you'd be wasting money right now to try and get in and do it, so we're going to hold that off until a spring project, so.
The bad news was still with the supply chain.
Yeah.
Still waiting on parts that have been ordered months ago, and now they're saying February. Well, depending on what our February is like, may be able to do something or maybe not, but I'm thinking probably April or May before we do like ribbon cutting and flag dedication.
Both department heads, EMS was there and the highway garage, they both understand. So I mean, it's, you know, a move-in date is probably going to be somewhere in the March area by the time we get those generators set and get all, like I said, the walkthrough has to be done at that point to make sure that everything, because it's still under the contract, so, you know, make sure everything is up to standards to the county.
Yeah, it was a good meeting, well, they're all good meetings, but that was a good meeting for everybody's really right on point, and.
It was.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Good job, as always. Any other department heads?
Good evening, members of the commission, other elected officials, and our department heads. It has been my pleasure to work with you all since our appointment in January of 2019. Many folks forget that we were not county attorneys in 2009 to 2012, and also not in 2017 or 2018. The nature of governmental legal appointments is that they often depend on the outcome of elections, which can vary depending on a straight party vote in any given election. I'm very proud of what we've accomplished during our periods as county attorneys, and we always work with whoever our successor is to accomplish a smooth transition, and we will certainly do so again this time. Since the county attorney will not be appointed until January 1st, and I suspect there are different folks being considered, some advice for whoever is selected. First off, be available and accessible. I think if you speak with Sheriff Boyd and other department heads that we work closely with, they'd tell you that having a county attorney on call 24/7 is important because many times issues will arise that aren't necessarily during regular business hours. Also, I advise, as I advise county department heads all the time, look to others for best practice guidance. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. There are 91 other counties, and someone else is dealing with the same issues or the same problems as you are. Learn best practices from other counties, the Indiana Association of Counties, Indiana Municipal Lawyers Association, and incorporate them here. Every new practice we've instituted is because elected officials or department heads came to us requesting assistance, we've provided it. That often means being willing to adopt best practices used elsewhere, and also to advocate and lobby for the county's interests in any way possible. A few good examples. Commissioner Cora, a few years ago, wanted to bring transparency and openness to the selection process for engineering firms, a process that had previously been subject to claims of favoritism for certain firms. We proposed, and the commissioners adopted a selection process where one commissioner, one council member, and the planner and engineer are rotated in at random to score firms on different projects. That's been in place for five years, and it's a, it's a good working process. Commissioner Mrazinski also challenged us, figure out a way to secure land for the EMS and highway base in Rolling Prairie that he has long advocated for, and we went to work doing that and accomplished a rare donation of property from the state of Indiana to the county. He also said to us, come up with a way to honor individuals who have served, and we proposed a bridge naming process that is working well and has named any number of bridges, which used to be known only by number, with signage so that notable residents of our county are recognized in perpetuity. Commissioner Mathias challenged us to come up with a way to fund connectivity of all rail at Kingsbury Industrial Park, and even when staff at a particular state agency opposed the grant, we went around staff and working with our state legislators convinced the head of that state agency to award our county $1 million to connect all rail at KIP so that we get that park closer, and everyone here can feel very proud of the fact that that industrial park is now that much closer to being a rail-served park, one of the few in the Midwest that is served by two Class I rail carriers, which will aid job creation and economic development. Commissioner Mathias directed us to seek the grant for the voter registration van, and I'm exceptionally proud that van was used for early voting at a number of sites around the county this past election cycle. Five years ago, I got a call from Councilman Terry Garner, who asked for my help in saving the county fair and the fairgrounds, which was not only in poor physical shape but threatening to go deep in red ink. My office proposed not only the loan forgiveness, but establishment of the Fairgrounds Management and Events Corporation, and that new structure has allowed much-needed physical improvements to our county fairgrounds so that future generations can be the beneficiary. And I very much appreciate Councilman Garner's generous comments at the council meeting July 25th, where he was very gracious, said he couldn't have started FMAC without the help of my office. I am very proud of what we've accomplished together, an accomplishment he cited as the major accomplishment of his 20 years in county office. The message is there, be willing to work across the aisle to get things done. Let's try to get back to the bipartisan cooperation that has existed here for decades. Bottom line, whether I'm county attorney or not, I will never stop advocating for our county, and I will be available as needed to county officials after January 1st for anyone who needs or desires assistance on any issue facing our county. I thank the commissioners, the council, other elected officials, all the department heads I've worked with so closely during this latest round as county attorney. I look forward to working on a smooth transition with my successor and wish you all the best as we approach the holidays.
Thank you, sir. Any other department heads? Any other department heads? Seeing none, let's move along. No requests. Old business. Consider recommendation of the 2023 annual material bids for Highway Department. Dwayne Werner, Superintendent, who's going to have some long days and nights coming, it looks like.
It's, it's upon us, a little early this year, so just everybody be patient with us, we're, we're out as we speak right now, so. Yes, I have the recommendations from the last meeting's bid openings. For our Class I crushed limestone, we had two bidders, U.S. Aggregates Incorporated and South Lake Stone. We will accept both bids. South Lake Stone, South Lake Stone will be our primary bidder, and U.S. Aggregates will be our secondary. Class II by two minutes patching and rat materials, we had two bidders, Reith Riley Construction Company and Central Paving. We will accept both bids. We have Class V no lead diesel and E85. We had two bidders there also, Triple J Mar Petroleum Incorporated and Petro Choice Rackham Service. We will accept both bids, but what we do there is we call on the day of delivery to get the lowest pricing at that time. Let's see, we have, last one we have is Class VII culvert pipe and guardrail. We had two bidders. We had Debco Metal Culverts and St. Regis Culvert Incorporated, and we will accept both bids. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dwayne. I would move to accept all the bids with preference given to the lowest bidder in each category.
I'd second your motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good job, Dwayne, as always.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, authorize the full culling of property ownership list to exclude parcels LaPorte County wishes to retain, so SRA can propose a contract to handle the deed sale auction of the county. This is something that comes up regularly. People will come in and say, well, there's this little slip of land over here, and it shows on beacon that it belongs to the county, and it's right next to me, nobody does anything, or maybe it was a proposed road at one time, and people have to go through the whole long process of having it vacated, so after, have an attorney, has to go through the plan commission. It's, and I don't think it's hardly ever turned down unless there's a really, really good reason, which usually isn't, because it's been land owned by the county for many, many years, and it's not being developed, and it's not going to be. And we, I started looking at this, this is, I saw, I saw the list of how many properties we're talking about, hokey smokes, a lot. Now, some of them are like 8th Street, some of them are ambulance base or whatever, but a lot of them are just a little worthless trip of land, might as well let somebody have them. If it's on your property, my property, we split it, or if you don't want it, I take all of it, whatever, to put it back on the tax, tax rolls. So we want to, we have a firm that we use for that kind of stuff.
Yes, Commissioners, I spoke with Treasurer Whiskey, and I know she can address this as well. What we had gotten from Alex Bruggen Schmidt, who is the county's special counsel for property sales and conveyance, is, is look, get, call through that list. Fortunately, I think the treasurer has already spoken and requested our head of GIS to go through, and as she makes clear, and we want to make clear for the record, there is a definite order to a deed sale. Tax sale comes first, scheduled for December 8th, and the commissioner's sale in February, and then the deed sale. But I'll let, I'll let the treasurer address that further if she would. In terms of her discussions with GIS, and that they appear to be the best position to help search out that list.
Thank you. If it's okay with you, Mr. Vice President, I'll, I'll address this.
Please do.
There's a, as Mr. Fodden said, there's, there is a definite order to selling these properties. Most of these properties count to the county from the tax sales, previous tax sales, or commissioner's sales, and a lot of them are leftover properties. So the first thing we have to do is, we have to determine if we want to have a sale, which we have done, Mr. Commissioner Mrazinski, by your words just a couple minutes ago. And then the next thing is, is we have to generate a list. We have a list that has been started, and Mike Orjeski, who is the GIS person in the assessor's office, is looking into these properties. He's determining if they're right of ways, if they're lots, if they're vacant lots, if they're buildings, so that you all and all of us can go through that list and make sure that those are the properties that we want to sell. And then the next step is to make sure that the county has the deed to all these. We can't sell it without having ownership, and so we will next, with your permission, go through the list and make sure that the deeds are all recorded in the county's names. The, after that, SRI, who we use for our tax sales, will add them to the deed sale. Our tax sale is December 8th. The properties that don't sell at that tax sale will then go to the commissioner's sale in February. After those properties sell or don't sell, then we can schedule a deed sale and offer these properties for sale. I'm sure you must have some questions, so I'm, I'll try to answer them.
I have no question. I think you explained it very well for me to understand, and anybody else have a?
I think just authorizing GIS to continue the process of calling through would be helpful at this point, and then you've got a working list, and then you can get a quote from SRI, and then hopefully be able to move forward with an engagement.
Yeah, that was, that was the, the article here, the agenda item, is to just authorize a full calling of the property ownership. So I would accept the motion.
So Treasurer Whiskey, you said Michael's already working on this?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just, just given the, the time constraints, we have one more meeting before then, that that would be December 7th, the day before that sale, I, or at least that first thing, would it be your intention for some of this to get put on that December 8th?
Absolutely. And in fact, Mr. Glenn Lubke, who is with SRI, has volunteered to come up and talk to the commissioners and explain further how this process works, and we're hoping to, I know that Mike is working diligently on this list, and we're hoping to have something within the next week.
Wonderful.
So with the, with the Thanksgiving holiday next week, we, we sent a full list earlier, and one of the reasons why I voted against last time was we sent a full list that contained properties we knowingly didn't want to sell to SRI, and we knew it when we sent the list, there were properties we weren't going to sell. We didn't take any time or effort to cull any of those at that point, even though we knew there were some on there. Now we're looking at authorizing moving forward, something that we're probably not going to see until, more than likely, I won't see it in my packet, at least until probably the day of, which means I'm going to have to go through dozens of properties in the span of, you know, 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM when our meeting is, dozens of properties to try and confirm to vote on, that you guys want to put onto a sale literally the very next day. I'm not comfortable with that at all. We've seen what happens.
No, I don't think that's...
Yeah. Can I clarify too? I think, I think you may be confusing the tax sale for December 8th, and that is for, you know, tax delinquent properties, then there's the commissioner's sale, and then there would be the deed sale, because I understand your concern. You need to be able to look at a final comprehensive list before any county properties are put on it. I think that's the plan. I mean, I, Joey, correct me if I'm wrong, but.
No, you're, you're absolutely, the tax sale will not have any of these properties listed on it.
That's right. It's only tax delinquent properties.
Okay, so then.
This, this, this is a separate list. This, this has nothing to do with the tax sale. The only thing that, that the tax sale has to do is that you have an order to have these sales. You have the tax sale first, when those properties, whoever doesn't, or whatever property does not sell... When those properties, whoever doesn't, or whatever property does not sell on the tax sale, reverts to the Commissioner's sale. The deed sale, the deed sale is a sale on its own, and it's really to get rid of the county properties that are owned by the county. So that, and the other thing is, is that after you have a Commissioner's sale, after you have a Commissioner's sale, the, the, the properties that don't sell, the county can take the property through a deed. We haven't done that the last two years. That, that's the, the auditor's job to do that. And since we have newer people in there, that, that really hasn't been done for the last two years. But we can catch up with that this year. And that, that's how we get the, that's how we get this list. This, that's how we generate this list, from the properties that have not sold, that have gone through those two sales, and, and now they're on the, they're eligible for a deed sale. Let me put it that way.
All right. Thank you. I would move to table this.
You, you don't want him to, you want him to stop calling this?
If, if he's already working on it, then he's more than, more than free to continue working on it. I'm just saying that I want to ta, I, I have no desire to vote on this this evening.
Well, if you, if you're.
If there was an assurance that none of those properties would be at the, at the tax sale, I mean, you, I know you understand the distinction there between the.
I, 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 I think I do, but at the same time, my first, the, the first question that I asked to the Treasurer, she said absolutely she wanted some of those properties to be on the next day on December eighth. Now, maybe there was a missed.
No, 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 I did not say that. I did not say that. I said.
Either way, Whiskey, it's fine. I'm, I'm not going to make, I'm not going to make a motion or a second to support.
Okay, but let, let me clarify that because I don't want you to misconstrue my words. I said that this has nothing to do with the tax sale. These properties will not be listed on that tax sale. The tax sale properties have been advertised twice already, and those are the only ones on that list. These are properties that do not sell in the, the, the tax sale or the Commissioner's sale. They're privately owned right now. If they don't sell on the Commissioner's sale, the county has the right to take the deed to that property in lieu of taxes.
Thank you.
That's, that's how that works. So please don't misunderstand me. These properties are not listed on the tax sale or the Commissioner's sale.
Thank you.
So we'd be looking at when, if the Commissioner's sale is not until February, this would be sometime after that before we would be able to do anything with it.
Correct. And if you, if you do not approve this tonight, then Mike will not continue until you tell him that you want that list.
Let me ask you this, Commissioner, are you comfortable with having GIS at least continue on the list at this point? Not taking any action toward any of those properties being at the tax sale? Would you be comfortable with that?
So if he, if, if he already started without needing our permission, gets started, he wouldn't need our permission to continue, so.
It's just you had no objection to him continuing then?
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that we table what's in front of us right here this evening.
I mean, we, we just wanted on the record that you had authorized, and so you're comfortable with, with his continuing that, whether there's a motion or not? And then they can come back to you at that point with the final called list.
That would be fine.
Fair enough.
So we're going to table the exact motion, but we're going to continue doing the work. I'll second that. All favors say aye.
No, that, that wasn't a motion, Mr. Vice President.
What is your motion, sir?
My motion is to table this agenda item that we're currently discussing right now.
I would second your motion to table it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next on our agenda, consider the 2023 Workers' Compensation Renewal. John Jones, Missy Hanny Insurance.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioner Haney, Auditor Stamos, Attorney Friedman. Thank you for allowing me on the agenda this evening. I received the renewal proposal last week, and the renewal date is 12/7. And I realize that you don't, you do not meet again until the actual renewal date. They'll renew at 12:01 AM on the seventh. We have had some, a few years of stabilized claims and some pretty good rates. In the last few years, we've been climbing on, on our loss ratio. So there needs to be and there will be a renewed effort to bring those claims down. In fact, I'm here tonight with Stacy Green, a member of the management team for the county's account, and also Connor Cox from Bliss McKnight and representing Bitco Workers Comp Insurance. He braved through this storm from Bloomington, Illinois, tonight to be here to reassure us of renewed commitment of risk management. We had some really good, strong, solid risk management visits all the way up until COVID. And in my estimation, that fell off quite a bit. So I've, I've stressed the urgency behind coming back to the county, and I've got the reassurance that that will occur. Because without lowering our current experience modification, this isn't going to be a real marketable product. And even Bliss McKnight realized and sent along the loss runs with the renewal, fully understanding that we might want to take a look at trying to be more competitive. And I've done that with some phone calls. I don't think we're on solid ground there. I think that we're going to save more money by sticking in another year here and trying to improve the situation we have. And there is a 12% increase for this year. And, and none of us want that, but I think that's the reality of, of where we're at. We're above the break even point with the carrier, with our current modification of 1.63. So that's going to take some serious attention to that risk management, as I said. And if you'd like to hear from Connor Cox, he's here to speak to that a little bit. But that 12% shows that in the past five years, and it's actually gone up since last week, another $100,000. We've got several open claims and we've got hundreds of claims that have occurred in the last five years to the tune of more than $2.8 million in payouts. So that situation has created an increase again this year as we had last year. I'd just entertain any questions, I think, at this point.
I'm good. I know Joe's on the insurance committee, so I'm pretty sure you would understand this. So I would entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Jones, my, one of my questions I have here, obviously, if we don't do this, then we'll be without workers' compensation insurance the morning we next, the next, of our next Commissioner meeting, correct?
Yeah, you're talking about as far as quotes, maybe?
Or you said our current policy runs out on December seventh?
It does. You know, and the carrier thinks that they're a month early, but without realizing that I have to come to a public meeting earlier than that to introduce this. So I do apologize for this last, last meeting of the year before that.
All right. And there were no other proposals, correct? No other options?
There are none received as of yet, that's correct.
How many did you send out for?
I reached out to three others.
Three others and this, the current one?
Yeah, and I, you know, I could continue to work on that, but that would, if I, if I do find something better, we'd have to call a special meeting before the seventh.
What do you think, Mr. Vice President?
I'd like to entertain a motion.
Have a financial suggestion, if I'm allowed to?
Yes, please.
Ask the question, is the policy or the renewal allowed to be carried on a month-to-month basis so that such an evaluation could be done? The old policy, the new policy?
Yeah, that's a fair question. Typically, it's quarterly. But yeah, we could do that.
Very good. Then I would make a motion for quarterly approval for one quarter of this to be able to shop it around some more.
Okay.
Thank you.
If it goes up, then.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll have that within the next month to report back.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Good job, as always. Next on the agenda, consider contract renewal with Access Laporte County, Inc. Andrew White, Director.
Good evening, Commissioners. I want to thank you for allowing me to come in front of you this evening. I am completing just about my first year as Director of Operations for Access Laporte County. And I just want to say that I have had a tremendous time getting to know everyone down here at the county. I've had a great experience. Seth and Darlene and Ting and IT are the ones that I've probably had the most interaction with. But I am now neighbors with Diane and everybody that I work with on a regular basis in order to get all the recordings of all the various boards and commissions have been great. We are approaching the end of a two consecutive three-year contract. I believe Mr. Friedman can kind of elaborate if I, I can't do this. The last agreement was put into force in 2016 and will end on December 13th of this year. As opposed to probably every other vendor that you have coming in front of you now, especially one that would have two consecutive three-year contracts, we are requesting no increase in the amount that we receive from the county in order to continue to do what we do by broadcasting county meetings on our outlets at Comcast Channel 97, on our website at accesslaportecounty.org. And one thing that we have begun to do in the past, we have archived meetings for one year before they fall off the website. And after that time, we still have a library of meetings. But what we have done is if someone wanted a copy of a meeting from the past, they would have to purchase that DVD from us. One of the things that I have instituted since I came aboard is that we are in the process of starting to work backwards. We are uploading all of the previous meetings from our nearly three decades worth of recordings to YouTube so that anybody will be able to see those at any time for as long as YouTube exists, which I don't think YouTube is going anywhere. But that's kind of one of the, it's going to be a, it's not going to be a quick process. I'm not going to say we're going to have this done by the end of 2023 or even 2024, but that's kind of where we're going. Because I believe that those recordings belong to the public and we want to make sure that they have access to those recordings. But we are constantly doing our best to be teammates with the county and our other municipal partners and provide the best quality audio, video and services that we can for the county. So we're just looking to extend our relationship.
Thank you. Just, just as an aside, I'd like to say, you know, say a special thank you to your staff. Every time I run into them, wherever they're at, be it here or off-site, like Parks Board meetings I attend, they're always so courteous and just, just genuinely good people.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, Commissioner Haney. And I always take every opportunity I can, you know, I, you know, we're kind of behind the camera. And I think that that's kind of where we prefer to stay is behind the camera. Because, you know, we're not, we are not wanting to. Our job is to make sure that we document the county's business and the city's business and everything like that. And so it's, you know, one of those things that I honestly want to, I don't want to be in front of the camera, but obviously I'm in front of the camera right now. But I appreciate that. And I, again, kudos to Anna and Lee back at the studio, Kevin and Andy Steele. I could not do this job, obviously, without them. So I really appreciate your kind words, Commissioner.
You've looked over the contract?
Yes, same terms and conditions, and they've been very good and consistent, living up to the contract obligations, and we're recommending approval to you.
Thank you.
Before I make a motion, one last, one quick question. I know there's been some issues, a few folks have reported kind of hearing sometimes when it's broadcast on ALCO. If you guys could look into those again one more time, and I'll, I'll see if, maybe they've been resolved in the past week or two.
Audio issues?
Yeah, I think there were some audio issues.
Yeah.
And I know some of it before was relation to the sound in this room that you guys couldn't control, but.
Yeah. Audio is one of those things, obviously, it's always going to be a work in progress. I believe that when we did have that last round of audio in here, it was improved immensely. But I will say that, you know, I am watching your guys' meetings from my office on a regular basis. I'm constantly monitoring it. And we are getting to a point where ultimately we're, we're going to be doing some system upgrades because the previous vendor that we had done all of the stuff, you know, in order to relay this meeting back to Michigan City, the equipment that we use is getting quite aged. And so we're going to have to kind of step up. You know, technology is one of those things that it's constantly evolving and we're using older stuff right now. But we, over the next couple of years are, you know, and part of that is that we want to, obviously, most people know us for Comcast Channel 97, but, you know, our goal is to make sure that all of these meetings, whether we're talking about meetings that are happening now, or as I mentioned earlier, meetings going backwards, we want people to be able to watch those on their television, on their phone, on their computer, on their tablet, however they choose to do it. My personal goal in this position is to try to get as many people involved in county and even city government. I just, I believe that government works better when more people are involved, more heads come to the table, when people are engaged, coming to meetings. And that's really one of my goals in doing what we do.
Thank you. I would move to approve our contract with Access Laporte County.
Second motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Andrew, you might, you might be interested to know right now, my sister lives in Statesboro, Georgia, so she watches our meetings.
Watching it? Outstanding. I love, I love to hear it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, consider unfavorable recommendation by the Plan Commission for rezoning in regards to the petition by Rodney Allen, RLC. This was a unanimous vote by the Plan Commission to reject that request. I would like a motion to reinforce what the Plan Commission has already decided.
And I'd look into this as well. This was a unanimous decision. There were plenty of remonstrators, so I, I would, I would move, so moved.
Second motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have a couple additions here. First was. Oh, with Craig Manning. I wondered what he was doing here. The renewal recommendation for. Craig Manning.
Yeah, for the, for the health insurance. Good evening. Glad to be here, glad to see you all. Yeah, here on behalf of the Insurance Committee with a recommendation to, to renew the, the current vendor arrangement for the county's self-funded health plan. As you may recall from prior years, the county is partially self-funded, which really means the county is kind of the primary insurance company. Stop losses purchased, historically, that's been with Berkeley. You do participate in a captive, which is a pooled arrangement. So Porter County, City of Laporte, City of Michigan City, you're all pooled together to, to save money for, for all of those entities. And that come with, can come with some, some dividends back to the plan. Terms of plan performance presently, we're running favorable to budget by about $1.2 million. So very excited about that performance. And, and part of that, you know, COVID certainly delayed and deferred primary care. And so that's, that's been problematic in some instances in terms of things becoming more acute and, and leading to higher cost claims. So I do want to commend you earlier this year for rolling out the employee clinic. That's been very popular. And strategically, I think it's a smart investment to control costs. The plan saves money every time someone uses that, gets prescriptions filled. So it's saving the, the individual money, it's saving the county money, in, in really enforcing primary care engagement and keeping folks healthy. So certainly can't attribute, you know, the full $1.2 million positive variance to that solely, but do want to commend you for, you know, being forward-thinking. And from a, from an HR perspective, I think it gives you a leg up from a recruiting and retention perspective. And then the, the renewal, so that's, that's looking at the past. Forward-looking, the renewal initially came in with a 16.6, 16.1% increase. There are some serious conditions on the, on the health plan. We did receive multiple quotes. And, and the final best offer came back from Berkeley or captive partner, and that's at 7.8% is the increase there. 138,000 of that, so roughly 10% is fixed costs. So actual premium is going up by that amount. Most of the additional increase is simply their recommended claims reserve because you're self-funded. It's just a prediction as to what the, the costs may be in the coming year. Again, being self-funded is what, what's allowing you to enjoy the, you know, the positive budgeting variance now.
Does the, if I may, does the recommended claim, does it represent a percentage of the annual claims essentially? Is that, is that what it relates to or conceptually?
Yeah, so the total recommended budgeted amount, yes. Most of that, so 9.257 million would be the predicted claims amount net of stop loss reimbursement, so.
Claims reserve then is recommended at what number?
Claims reserve then is recommended at what number?
So 9.257, 286 million.
That's the claims anticipated?
Yeah, so 9,257,000.
Okay, so the, oh, I see, the reserve is actually, sorry, the reserve is the, okay, the expected?
Yeah, that's the expected claim liability, yeah. So the fixed costs are fairly low. It's all, again, really the county being kind of the, the primary insurance company, you're directly paying those claims through UMR, through your administrator, to the hospitals and doctors and pharmacies.
Mr. Friedman, you've looked this over?
Yes, we're, we're...
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion.
Sure. I would, before I move to that, I'd just like to say that I am, I'm very, I'm very pleased with what we've been able to work with this past year, and especially rolling out the employee health clinic. It's, it's been a huge, we've had a good buy-in from our employees on that, and obviously completely voluntary. I always want to stress that. You don't have to go there, but if you do, it will save you money immediately, and then it saves our plan money, saves the county money, saves the taxpayers' money. And it's my hope that when we approve this, we're looking at a surplus of just over $1.2 million in our health budget here. So the increase, the total increase of that 7.8% is roughly $867,000. The employee share cost of that for their contributions would be $130,000. It's my hope that of that $1.2 million surplus that we currently have, we'll be able to take that $130,000 and use, that would, that would be passed on to the employees and because of their, their diligence and hopefully to encourage them to continue to utilize the clinic moving forward, to be able to offset any increased cost to our employees' insurance over, over this next year and be able to hold the rate steady. Be my hope. We'll see. Obviously, that's more of a fiscal decision, but we've worked tremendously hard this year. Really, you guys went back, really sharp, got them to sharpen their pencils on getting that rate down from 16%. So I think it's something we can make happen, but obviously that'll be, that'll be a decision for the fiscal side. But I can't be more thrilled at what's happened this year here and how we've been able to, to defer some of those costs and really keep what could have been, you know, compared to other, we've seen other counties going up by 20%, and this is, this is, this is good work this year.
Yeah.
So with that, I would move to approve the, approve the next year's contract.
Second to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Craig.
Thank you. Happy safe holidays. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And last on the agenda, the never-ending battle, trying to take care of Medevue Estates and not affect the people downstream on Kingsbury Creek. We've had an issue here with landowner, leave it that way. I would ask for a motion to consider, hold harmless agreement on Woodruff &amp; Sons against any trespass claims for the final stretch of the Medevue Drainage Project near Kingsbury Creek. I've been down there, I've talked to people on both sides. They're really, every effort has been made to make sure that this is done and done right, to help out one side without affecting the other side. But we've got people who have a problem with us being close to their property. We, I would consider a motion, then, as I've said, to hold harmless agreement with Woodruff &amp; Sons against any trespass claims for the final stretch of Medevue Drainage Project near Kingsbury Creek.
So moved, and I would, I would just add on to that, that Woodruff &amp; Sons has, has said that they are going to be extreme, as diligent as they can to stay in that, to stay in that right-of-way and off of, off of the property. Obviously, when you're dealing with something that's right there on the edge in that easement, that, you know, things can happen. But, so this isn't, you know, a carte blanche type of thing, but it's, it's a good, they're going to make a really good, good faith effort, and we want to extend that to them, that, you know, that, a hold harmless for, you know, accidental trespass, you know, you know, a couple feet over under a property line, you know, it is what it is. We're, we're trying to do what's right for everybody in that area. So, thank you.
I've come to the end of the agenda. Commissioner comments?
Mr. Vice President, we need to, that was a second, but we need to call for the vote.
There was a third addition.
So you'll need a vote first on authorizing the, the hold harmless?
Oh, do we?
There was a second, but we didn't, we didn't vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, thank you. And there was a third?
Yes, to adjust the credit card authorization back, the treasurer, there's been the two years of transition. Auditor's Office fully able and capable of taking on responsibility for the county credit card designation at this point, and so we would ask and request that there be a formal designation in the record, authorizing the auditor to reassume those functions for the, as the credit card holder for the county.
Sure. So I would move to transfer responsibility from the credit cards, from the treasurer's office, to move that under the purview of the auditor's office.
Second to motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll do Commissioner comments.
Thank you. It's been a fantastic couple of weeks. Multiple meetings with multiple department heads and onsite visits around the county. Probably spoke earlier, we had a really productive insurance board meeting here at the last meeting. This was immediately after the last commissioners' meeting, where we delved into the health insurance side of things. Again, I'd just like to reemphasize to all of our employees, if, if you, if you have a need that can be handled by our employee, by the employee clinic, it's completely voluntary, but feel free to utilize it. It, there's, there's no copay. When you visit, if you get your prescriptions filled there on site, there's no cost to the employee for any of the prescriptions that they have filled there on site, which, and it's a very diverse pharmacy. It operates under the 340B plan. So part of our savings in what we've been able to do this year, going into next year with our insurance rates, and hopefully all of that will, will work out on the other side. But part of that is getting, is folks utilizing and using that clinic whenever they can. And I've used it myself, my daughter has as well. It's been, it's been a positive experience, just like going to any other, either nurse practitioner or, or pediatrician. So it's very, very, very easy to do. Also, just a reminder for folks that need, like, physicals for their DOT certifications, like our highway, highway guys, you can get those done and schedule, they got to be scheduled ahead of time, but you can get those done at no cost to our employees as well through the, through that clinic service as well, which is really, which is really good. And it saves us money too, because going through there is just that little flat rate that they charge us as opposed to going through a normal practitioner who bills that extra rate. So it's a win-win again for everyone. Also, we, 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 we recognized our veterans this past week on November 11th, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. A great service that was held both, both here in the city of LaPorte that I was at, with Mayor Dermody, Commissioner Mrazinski, Councilwoman Graham Rosa, and of course Attorney General Todd Riquita, and many numerous other people. There was also a concurrent event that happened as well in Michigan City, that, a memorial that was done up there at that same time with Mayor Perry and, and his team up there. So I think, I think it's crucial, we, we can't thank our veterans enough for the service that they, and the sacrifices that they've made for us. It is, it is truly overwhelming, the sacrifices some, some and all have made for us. Otherwise, everybody, please be careful and safe when you leave here tonight. Give yourself extra time, and please watch out for emergency vehicles. And otherwise, I am really excited about the future of LaPorte County. Things look extremely bright. Thank you.
The LaPorte County Works Program was highlighted, so many unique businesses this weekend, highlighting an industrial HVAC company. We continue to show the diverse set of opportunities LaPorte County residents have for work and career opportunities. ThermoCycler Industries, Inc. was founded by Don Kelver in 1984. Since that time, he'd been specializing in manufacturing of efficient, energy-efficient industrial heating and ventilation systems. In the early 1980s, with buildings becoming better insulated and more attention being given to energy efficiency, efficient heating, Don felt there was a strong need for air turnover equipment that could offer similar energy savings and comfort to smaller buildings. In September 1984, the ThermoCycler GTC 400 was born to serve that need. Over the past 38 years, their product line has been expanded, and ThermoCycler dealers have installed their system in thousands of buildings, where they have been saving energy and improving the working conditions of employees in millions of square feet of warehouses, manufacturing buildings, athletic fields, and other large open-area buildings. ThermoCycler has many years of personal experience in HVAC contracting, manufacturing, and service. ThermoCycler takes a very sensible and simple approach to saving energy for heating warehouses and industrial manufacturing buildings. Compared with conventional infrared unit heaters and direct-fired makeup heating equipment, ThermoCycler has often saved 30 to 50% in energy savings. ThermoCycler Industries is a small company with employees making between $20 to $40 per hour and is always accepting employment applications. For more information on ThermoCycler, check out their website, www.thermocycler.com. And for more information, you can contact Greg Kelver. He is the president at 219-767-2990. They're located at 111 East Hamilton Street in downtown Union Mills. Great little company there. Speaking of Union Mills, before I go further, I see we have a couple of high school students here tonight. Just say your name. And you're from South Central? And you have a famous father, I know that. In projects that, oh, I got to do this too. The annual, because this is some people really, it's huge in this county. The Jane Bernard Animal Adoption Center will have their annual pet photos with Santa. That'll be December 10th from 9 to 1, and December 11th from 10 to 2, at Pet Supplies Plus at 1406 East Lincoln Way in LaPorte. I think that used to be, what was the name of it? Anyway, it's a big deal. People take their dogs, cats, goats, snakes, they didn't get a picture taken with Santa. So I know Mike will be taking his little foster bull. The County Road 150 North, Loughran Road 250 East project, on a road that has a ton of traffic. It's about to come to a close. We're going to do the punch list on that here any day. I've spent a lot of time out there with this. I don't think I've ever seen a project in all my years of county government that has caused so many issues, but it'll be done soon. As was mentioned, November 11th, the Civic Auditorium, this is the 25th, 28th year, I think, that we've done this program. I've been on the Mayor's Veterans Committee, originally appointed by Mayor Gonzalez, so I'll tell you, I've been on there a long time. And it's been my pleasure and honor to get the speaker for the last few years. Remember last year, my friend Jackie Walorski, before that, Senator Young, before that, Senator Joe Donley. This year, we had our past Secretary of State, past Congressman, and currently the Attorney General, Todd Riquita, known Todd a long time. He had a really, really good speech, talking about things that veterans have done for this country, and how it's time that, that we come together as a country, as a state, and especially as a county. It really hit home with a whole lot of people. And it was a great speech. The following day, out at the museum, we did the dedication of the plaque and pictures and whatnot from the USS Indiana attack submarine and the USS Indianapolis ship. Our, one of our maintenance guys, David Trough, going Navy Davy, him and I put on a little presentation out there. Had about 18 people there. It was awesome. It was one of the best things I've been involved in a long time, really super good. This morning, I was out at the Rolling Prairie EMS station in Highway Garage. We finally got the electric. They turned on the gas yesterday. Still waiting for some parts. Should hopefully be done, hopefully by May, March 1st, what we're hoping for. RDC meeting tonight, we talked about our project 421 I-94. We talked about our project I-94 and US-20, KIDC, which is coming along. And we have some future products that are projects we can't really talk about because we have a non-disclosure agreement with those companies. But I can tell you, there's, things are happening. In this building, this coming Saturday, 10 o'clock, we will have the medal presentation. If you remember back in 19, 2004, I think was the first year, when we give the, presented a medal to all LaPorte County veterans. It's a recognition medal of their service, regardless of what that service may have been. Originally presented to soldiers returning from World War I. And we re-energized this program in 2004. At our first presentation, we do it every year. And this year, I think we have about 34, 35 veterans who'll be in here at 10 o'clock to get their medal. Hey, even if you're not a veteran, or you're not getting a medal, you can come on down and watch it. Usually takes half hour, about all. We get right through it. Joe Golick, and myself, and my, members of my committee. Do, do, do. Oh, one other thing I wanted to bring up. This is just something that happened. You know, it's snowing like crazy out there. Bailey McGrath, who works here, she's, she's, she's something. She's really, she's one of those girls that, she does a lot, and she's kind of behind the scenes, but she's really just a good person. She lives in Portage. So she was getting out of here tonight. She wanted to get out of here to get home, and she come back in, in tears. "I don't know what happened, but my windshield wiper is gone." Well, you kind of got to have a windshield wiper tonight. She said, "I looked all around, I, I couldn't find it." Tony Rodriguez, hell of a man, went out, looked at her car, looked around, couldn't find it, went to the store, bought a windshield wiper, come down and put it on her car so the poor girl can get home. Now, that, that's the kind of dedicated, good employee people that we have working at this county, doing good, positive things. I, I just, I couldn't say enough about it. If, would you check out there and see, is it still snowing like crazy? Because if it is, I would like to entertain having a two-hour delay for tomorrow. I've talked with Dwayne at the Highway Department, I talked with Larry. They got a lot of stuff to get done before employees get to work, and it's some really thick, heavy snow. Last I heard, it was like four or five inches already. If it's still being nuts, I would like to entertain that idea, to have a two-hour delay.
It's let up pretty good.
It's let up a little?
It's let up, yeah.
Yeah, what?
It looks from the radar like it's actually ending, but you, you're the-
You have to speak up, okay.
It looks like from the radar that it may be tailing off, but you're the commissioners.
The, the last forecast I saw said seven, said seven o'clock it was supposed to end. Is that, Dwayne, since you're here, you think your crews are going to have enough time to get everything opened up by the morning?
We'll be out at 3:00 AM, yeah. So that'll give us, what, a five-hour window before 8:00.
Larry, what do you think? You got all the-
We're going to pull our guys in a little bit early, try to get to parking lots as soon as we can.
Oh, yeah, then there you got the courts. Okay, well, if it picks up and gets bad again, we'll talk, and we can always send out all users if we have to. We can't wait till late 30 in the morning. We tried that already, it didn't work. So, okay, with that, everybody be careful on the way home, and, meeting adjourned.